9:30, we're starting with a FLAP. That's the Federal Land Access Program Grant Application Discussion with Mr. Bailey.
Well, the resort districts had this, we had kind of a, five or six years ago, what should we be focusing on for priorities? And so, our community, this is one that got identified, that if there was some way over time, we could get pavement on the Little Joe road up to the top of the path, that would be a good thing. So then, here recently, maybe in the last month or two, Duane had made us aware that they, and I think Don, that the FLAP grant application had been maybe due in March, but it was going to now be May 15th. So, we took the, the resort district took the step of hiring IBAG, Mark Bellin's team to, you know, explore it. And so, now where we're at, and I want to make it clear that we're not asking the county to do anything today. We understand the process unless you're the state government the last day. You know, this has to come before you, you know, it's got to be on the agenda, and public should have the right to comment and make their, make their point. So, we're not asking for any action today. But, I might have Carol start, if it's all right, because Carol has another meeting. But, if you could just maybe tell where Forest Service is at, and part of the reason we think the timing might be really well with some work that Abe and others have done on getting some great outdoor access funding for the Little Joe, so, go ahead.
I'll just discuss to start off. George contacted us.
Carol?
George had contacted me from the resort district, interested in putting together a FLAP proposal for paving on the north fork of the Little Joe. And so, we've been working with the resort board to provide information that we have. And Nate Kegel, who's with us today, previously applied for a FLAP planning grant, a planning application, which we did not receive, and commissioners will remember that. So, we already had a lot of the information gathered when Nate put that application together as far as cost of paving, and then updating some of those costs. We do have scheduled for the north fork of the Little Joe, some Great American Outdoors money, and some capital investment money that Nate has applied for. And Nate, what, I can't remember the, mainly for doing upgrading, surface replacement, some culvert replacements in there, cleaning the ditches, basically upgrading it to, through the best management practices, to reduce sediment on the north fork of the Joe into the Little Joe stream. We're doing that work in conjunction with our proposed Red Bull timber sales that will be with some haul coming down the north fork of the Joe, and getting that road up to, to meet all the best management practices for that project. So, that's how we applied for the, the money through Great American Outdoors, and through the capital investment to help us meet that. So, Nate, do you have anything that you could add there?
I think you said it pretty well. We were originally scheduled for capital investment for three phases, including the phase you just described, and the second two phases are the crossing at mile post seven to upgrade that to a bridge, to kind of further improve our aquatics enhancement there, and then fiscal year '23, similar structure at mile post 10, but it would be more of a bottomless arch structure. So, those are still on the schedule. The only thing that changed is in this current fiscal year '21, which you guys know about because we're partnered on, is the, the Great American Outdoors Act will, will implement the resurfacing and all the drainage work, kind of, I wouldn't say starting this year, but the funding showed up this year. We'll have our partnership executed in the next couple of months, and then probably construction next year.
So, by resurfacing, you mean you do gravel?
Yeah.
Gravel.
So, it's a perfect time to maybe use some of that leverage from that grant program, if I'm understanding, to...
Keep the momentum going?
Keep the momentum and try to get the pavement on the top. And, it's a type of thing where, if I'm understanding what Nate, Carol, and others have said, the money from the Great American Outdoors can be showed as kind of part of the matching funds. Isn't it total of three, four million, you know, in multiple years, or?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how federal highways would view it, but I certainly think that what Mark's doing in the application, he would definitely reference that as contribution to the project, and if there would be further leverage needed, it would be through probably our federal lands transportation program. Those would be the, and we have other avenues we would point to, because the FLAP program does require 13.42% project match. So, that's what George is speaking to, is all those things that we could point to as contributions to the project in the match requirement.
Where, is there, I can't remember when the last time we tried this in the study. Are there still some old ESAs and all that that would be, or we have to redo all of that because wasn't that an issue last time? Somebody was talking about?
It was with the, with the grizzly bear connectivity, so, you know, how, how we would go through that. You know, right now, grizzly bears may be present on any place on the Lolo, so we certainly have to consult with that. And paving certainly probably would show a plus for the bull trout issue, reducing sediment that would go into the north fork of the Joe stream. So, could benefit one, and hopefully maybe not be detrimental to the other, not, can't say.
I wouldn't think it is. I mean, Idaho side, and paid for how many years?
A long time.
So, isn't one of the requirements of the FLAP grant, that the county then take over ownership of the Little Joe road, and then thus, further maintenance would be the county?
Yeah, the county or the state. Am I correct, Nate, that if it were approved for funding, then a county or state would have to take over the, the future maintenance of that road?
Yeah, so, that, that's kind of the dilemma that we have. My understanding is this isn't really like a grant application. It's, it's an application that they're going to review, and they're going to shortlist projects. And so, it's kind of a high altitude, and there's, there's a couple of criteria that we have to meet, to be considered. And, one of them is maintenance. And so, basically, what they would like to see is you're going to take over jurisdiction and maintenance of, of this road. Well, it's, it's going to be a 14-mile section of road, and we're figuring it's about $7 to $8 million project. And, in the past, you know, there is a Schedule A agreement, so it's a maintenance agreement that the Forest Service is currently in, and we understand that the county cannot really take over the jurisdiction of maintenance. But we don't think that that should penalize us, you know. It shouldn't just go to Jackson Hole or Aspen, Colorado, because they have a public works that can take over the maintenance. And, in the past, we made the argument, and we've got a letter that the county commission wrote, the first application, and it was kind of conditioned on this collaborative maintenance agreement. And so, there was funding available to provide maintenance. So, we have to show support. So, really, they want to see that the county's behind this project, and they'll support it to the extent they can without overcommitting to the maintenance. And so, yeah, if we do have the right collaborative maintenance agreement in place, like we currently have, then we would be interested in participating, and that's kind of how we think the response would need to come. And, you know, the county would want, you guys would want to be behind the project to commit that you're going to be a partner in it, but also state that, you know, you can't take on a financial burden that the county taxpayers can't shoulder. That's how this original letter was drafted, back in the, in the first application, and that's kind of how we think we need to wordsmith it. But we're here to see, number one, if you guys are interested in pursuing that angle, and we could help draft up some language with, to that effect. Anything that we provide is better than nothing. We could, we could submit this application with no support. We probably wouldn't win, but you never know. The more support that we have from the community, the more likely it's going to happen. This really checks a lot of boxes. It definitely provides access to the forest, you know, it's, it's environmentally great for Little Joe Creek. You got the timber industry that is going to support. The, the town of St. Regis is proactively pursuing tourism, you know, so just, it really fits in nicely. I think when you're reviewing the application, there's going to be an interest in, in making this project happen, and the more interest that we can show, the better. But I agree, the county cannot commit to foretaking it all.
Right, I was going to bring that up, that, I mean, currently, it's maintained primarily by Forest Service, so just by virtue of pavement being slapped down on there, why, I would hope that they don't just walk away from any interest in helping at all, but I assume they're the primary partner you're referring to to collaborate with, not the state, but the Forest Service and us?
Yep. So, currently, they have what's called a Schedule A agreement, which was noted in the first letter that went out, and they're, they're paying a subcontractor, maybe you can expand on that, to, to maintain the road. And so, that Schedule A would still be in place. That would be a condition that we would require it still be in place, but it would go to the county, and then, and then maybe the resort board, and maybe the timber industry, and maybe there's some other partners. And, and the interesting part was, we're at 30,000 feet, so we don't need to know the exact details. And when the federal highway administration comes in, they might change their mind and do something a little bit different. But we just want to get them here, and we want to get this project shortlisted and show that there is interest, knowing that we can commit to what we could commit to, so.
I know, Carol, you had mentioned in other meetings, that you have a certain amount of expenditure each year on the Little Joe donkey with dust pavement and grading, that you, every year are funding right now, or, am I correct?
We do, and, and I guess, Mike, maybe you can address what we do yearly on it?
Well, typically, we're just putting in blading right now, a couple times a year.
Is there any just pavement at all of this stuff?
At times, there are, depending on home, or any commercial activity.
I've heard a number, I don't know if it's accurate, but like 30 or 40,000, but that's a little bit.
To do the whole thing, I have to bring the numbers up. It's not cheap.
Yeah, it definitely adds up, and we typically require it of the commercial haul. Willie, you can talk to that. It's an expense that they have to absorb that makes them less competitive against the mills in Idaho to absorb that, because if they're in Idaho, they typically go down the river on the St. Joe and don't have to absorb that, whereas they have to request to come over the Joe, and then hit National Forest System Road, and, and then the maintenance gets applied to their, their stumpage and stuff like that, and it's a cost to them. So, it, it's usually about annually 30,000 for dust, dust application, probably 15,000 to 20,000 in maintenance of blading of the surface and cleaning the ditches and culverts and that kind of thing. But annually, if there's no commercial haul, we're probably absorbing about, I don't know, 13,000 bucks a year, or something like that, just kind of basic bare minimum maintenance.
So, maybe it'd be a good time, Willie, to talk about, because this hasn't just been tourism. We feel very blessed in St. Regis, all of Mineral County, to have a tax base, you know, and they're, they're not only maintaining, you know, the, the current footprint, they're spending tens of millions of dollars in improving it, and it's all tax based. But more importantly, jobs for our, our counties. So, do you want to talk about how it affects you guys?
I can, you know, the 30 or 40,000 is a pretty regular number. I mean, we don't do that every year, but certainly, we've either got work going on on the Montana side or on the Idaho side. Both those require that we do that dust abatement work. And, so, the one thing I would add there is that, you know, the, when we're doing it from the Idaho side, there is a benefit to the Panhandle National Forest, if that gets paved over here, because we then can pay more dollars for the timber on the other side. We just, we fund that, but it comes out of, it, it, you pay less to the government for the timber, and we then spend it on the road. And, so, I believe that's a good place to go for part of the discussion here, is to talk to Idaho Panhandle National Forest, and talk about those benefits. I think we have, Carol, before had that conversation.
I know they, they want us to pave it, because, because of that, they think their timber sales would be more competitive, and higher stumpage certainly would be possible.
You know, we, we have X amount of dollars we can spend for every board foot that comes through the gate. And, so, we don't go buy the timber and pay what the max we can. We go look and we take out all of those costs that are related to bringing up timber here, and then we give them a net stumpage right after that. So, again, they do reap a big benefit on a project that's maybe even multiple years, could be near $100,000 for work on the Little Joe and dust abatement and blading and those kinds of things. So, it's a big number that we deal with, and they often deal with too. And when we get started on, on Red Bull, it's going to be the same story for the Lolo here as well. It is going to be, the work that we have to do, any kind of work that we have to do, like dust abatement kind of work on, on the north fork, is going to come off of what we pay the government for, for timber, so. And it's substantial. That stuff is not cheap, so.
So, that collaborative maintenance agreement was part of the application, where we got to almost to the point of going over, that I've heard about, you know, the paving, I wasn't here, but my understanding, it was all ready to go, and then kind of that wild fish, wildlife and parks grizzly issue derailed it, and I've been told by people that have lived here, that then it went up petty crack, some of the money that was programmed. It seems like that's something that, I, I've talked to the county commissioner chair at, Jack Buell, about two years ago, and he said, you know, they would be, you know, their county would be totally in favor of supporting it. I talked to one of the members of Shoshone, was the same thing, more for the tourism, you know, the loop, but the jack was more about the timber industry, you know, making it more collaborative, and we can lower the whole emissions, you know, the sediment in the Little Joe, preserve the bull trout, that's, that's a plus too, so. I know there's other members that have come here to talk about maybe some of the other issues or advantages. Does anyone want to say anything?
Willie probably gave my, my spiel as far as the benefits to what we do in St. Regis, but one that you brought up that should be high on the priority list is the sediment load. Everything we deal with with the bull trout and the fisheries up there, I mean, that's a priority fishery for the, for the fish wildlife and parks, whether you want special or not, excuse me.
I've been told, there was a gentleman from Trout Unlimited, and he said, I think, based on some of the forest plan and stuff, that number one, you know, habitat for bull trout is the Little Joe. And, you know, now that we have Red Bull, which is this community-minded, how do we get everybody whole? And, you know, he said that he would definitely write letters of support for, you know, the paving, and so, just make it better for everybody. But, I know some of the businesses, I know, that are part of the St. Regis community too, like Gaspur, and Lincoln, and our business. We see that as a real plus, not only sustaining our main industry, but, you know, tourism industry on, on top of it. One other thing I'll just add quick, and my wife and I spend a lot of time over in the St. Joe camping and recreating, and, and I don't know if anybody else gets over there, but the amount of tourism and business that's over in that St. Joe, if we could pull a quarter of that over here, it's huge. I mean, it is a, I guess, you have to see that to believe, and it starts at 5 o'clock in the morning on the weekend, and...
Go over there on a weekend, yeah, just drive down that river.
If we open that gate, I just think the benefits are immeasurable today with that, the potential is for that to happen.
In our conversations with, with Nate and the Forest Service, there's so much funding coming down the pipe, we don't even know where it's earmarked or how it's going to get spent. This does draw attention to the project, and we, ideally, we would love to see the FLAP program come in and pay for this, but we don't know what other programs are going to come down, and this is going to be in queue, and it's going to check a lot of boxes, and so, we're, there's some real benefit, I think, of just getting it in the pipeline, regardless of the FLAP grant. We'll make the strongest application that we possibly can. One of the, one of the issues is, is due the 15th of May, so we're right up against our deadline. And, I think we have, they've done a great job on the first application, and we're, we're using a lot of that information. So, it's really a strong application, and what makes it probably the best it can be is the public support and the support of, of the county. We understand you probably have to support it conditionally, because we don't have time to vet out. How much money are we going to have available for maintenance? We're just going to say it's got to be there.
Yeah, see, that's, that's my concern. I mean, I think it's a wonderful project that needs to be done, but there's just no way that the county can afford to maintain a paved road. I mean, we've got paved roads that the county ended up taking over, and they're going to heck, and we can't afford to fix them. And, I mean, up there, you've got rock slides that come down and, you know, take a part of the road out or whatever, and, you know, and we don't have a road tax. I mean, the road is funded through SRS, and we only have a limited amount of money, and, you know, there's some way that some of the money coming in and tourism or whatever can benefit the, the road to, to maintain that. But, you know, we only have a four-man crew, and there's no way they're going to have time to keep it open all winter long, and anyway, that's just my concern, is I think, I think it needs something that needs to be done, and it'll really benefit Mineral County. It's just that, we just can't afford to maintain it.
How, how do our neighbors over the hill, you know, that paved road's been in Idaho a long time? How, if it's not open year-round, and how do they?
That's, that's on our list to find out.
Find that out?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Do you know, Willie? Because, I mean...
For what now?
The, the St. Joe, Little Joe road on the Idaho side, how is that maintenance balanced between the county and?
Shoshone County is, has an agreement with the forest over there, and, and they do the work, and there's some funds traded. The county pays for part of it. It's a, what do they call it, assured agreement of some kind anyway, so, that's what I think I know about it.
And that road's clo, it's closed in the winter?
Yeah, they don't, nobody, they don't keep it open, they don't pave it.
Yeah.
But they have, they have a road tax though over there too, don't they? I mean, they're not...
I don't know that. That'd be a good call.
Be something that I doubt how...
You know, one thing I would like to say, the county commissioners have been great for supporting everything going on in the county and looking for ways to improve the county, and, and I think IFG and our collaborative groups and the forest and all these people, I just hope the county doesn't make a decision not to support this based on what we have here today. I think the county is going to have to find funds, and we're going to help with that. This county is growing, and, and it's not going to change, and, and that situation is going to create the need for additional funding of additional people, and I just hope that the county or the commissioners don't make the decision today not to support this, based on what we see here today, because today is not what we're going to see tomorrow. It's, and all of us are working to help improve that, and that's not going to stop. We're going to find a way to get this county up and running, and, and we see businesses going in already that, you know, we haven't seen growth like this in a long time. We see new businesses, people coming in, buying existing businesses. There's some optimism in the county, and it's because of things that we're doing as a county to, to do that, and we're going to continue that process, so I'll let that go. That's my comment.
I'd just comment to Laurie, we're kind of blessed that, what, 25 years ago, whatever, primarily, I think, because of the sewer district, you know, that they created that resort district, and, like, if we measured how much the paving on 135, how that's changed the business community in St. Regis, it'd be phenomenal to get that number, but I don't think this one would be that big, but it's going to be a function of that. So, if this, and we're not asking for any action today, but, you know, at the next meeting, I think, May 7th, we probably are going to ask, no, we're not asking you to approve the, being part of the FLAP grant. We're going to wait a week, or whatever we need to do. We have to have, I think, your support by May 15th or more.
Right.
Yeah, May 15th.
But, there, this collaborative kind of road use permit, I think there's ways that, you know, if we are selected by the federal department of transportation, then there's ways that, you know, you can figure out the maintenance. And, one of the ones I was going to ask to come to the next meeting of congressional delegation, they've attended a meeting we had in St. Regis about a year and a half ago, and there is going to be a lot of money, and so, there, there could be maybe even a multi-state approach to, you know, maintaining the road, so. But, we, I'm not, I can't speak for the other board members, but there's going to be additional revenue generated in the resort district because of the increased tourism, and it would seem like it might be a natural thing, that some of that could be used for road maintenance.
Yeah, so my understanding is, you're not really selected, you're shortlisted. And then, federal highway administration comes to your community, will meet with you guys, and look at what that commitment looks like, and look at the road, and, and verify the design still works, and verify the price. So, so there's going to be another phase, and if that, if they come into town, and this is speculation, and you guys say, "Well, we can't do that," then they know that you guys can't do that, and maybe at that point, they say no, or they find another way to make it happen. So, we're, we're really trying to get shortlisted, and so, we're trying to show interest. So, we have a copy of the letter that you wrote last time, and the commissioner wrote last time, and they qualified it with, with this cooperative agreement, and I think you have to qualify it again.
Or contingent upon?
Yeah. It just qualified, so it's non-committal.
Right.
But there is interest that we're willing to do what we can do. And, so, we're going to leave you guys with a copy, so we brought each of you a copy of that letter, and then we have a copy of the application at its current state, so you can kind of get a feel for what they're looking for. And if you have any questions, give us a call, and we'll leave our cards, and then next week, if you guys want to...
Some of us might, will be absent next week.
Okay.
On the 7th, so, if we're going to, we need to do, let us know before, I mean, or we can sign up something contingent if we individually want to do that and get it done in time, so.
Yeah, so what would, I guess that would be helpful, knowing that what you guys need to do to, to be, like...
I don't want a timeline to skip by and we've missed the boat.
So, are you saying that you want something?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, for your information, one or two of us will be absent next Friday, so, in, if there's a deadline that we need to know about, we could come in on Monday or Tuesday, individually or together, if we need to beat, beat this timeline.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to, I mean, I want to support the project with the reservation of, I don't know if we can, if, if, you know, taking over the road...
Contingent upon a fair and equitable collaborative with, you know, I mean, that's what I was going to ask Nate and Carol, if this is beyond consideration, or is the Forest Service probably likely going to be a willing partner, or we don't want to commit to something if you guys are going to just, we can't do it now that you guys want us to be... and you guys are going to just, we can't do it now that you guys want it to be paved, we're out, we're out of the business, or is there still a good chance that there could be a Schedule A type of agreement for maintenance on this road if it was paved? Do you know anything in the wind, what the Forest Service is leaning?
We did agree to add the entire road to the Schedule A agreement this spring already, so now that gives us the ability, as a current state, the Schedule A essentially lists those roads that you plan to cooperate, and as of right now, it lists the county roads, it lists the Forest Service roads. Right now, it's exclusively on, well, you know, first little bit state, then the next little bit county, and then the entire remaining segment in question here is under Forest Service. So, other than doing project agreements against that, you guys have no maintenance obligation whatsoever. We are going to go ahead and partner, and do a, put a PA together, project agreement, and look at doing those capital improvements under the Great American Outdoor Act funding, so that's where it stands right now. What would be ideal, and what Federal Highways will probably want, is you to shift that from, on that schedule, from Forest Service over to county, but it'll stay on that with the ability to cooperate. So, essentially, what that gives you the ability to do is when you have these big infrastructure bills, you can put together these project agreements. You can cooperate, and lately, it seems like a lot of these bigger funding pots have come through opportunities at Forest Service. We did it with Sanders County, big bridge on the Thompson River. We, we obtained the funds, we put it into Schedule A project agreement, they replaced the bridge, that kind of thing. And so, if you did this Little Joe, and as we watched the deterioration or the maintenance needs, you would apply for Fed aid of some kind to do maintenance, and this Schedule A would allow you to do that. But, I'm just going to be honest, they will probably, if you were this correctly, and at least get them to come out, and perhaps the technical advisory committee at Federal Highways to come look at it this summer, somebody will ask you, do you have intention of, you know, moving this under jurisdiction? Because it's just simply a qualification of a program. I don't know if it's written in the law, or how it's all said, but if, if you flat out write in your letter of support, we will not take this, they won't even, they won't come visit, I can promise you that. If you at least word it enough to get the interest, it, it will be asked on site visit, and they still might do the same thing if you're fortunate enough to have them come visit. You all say, no, 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 they'll probably say, well, thanks, it's a great project, and you guys should apply for some other funding source, you know. So, I'm just being honest, that's probably how it'll, it'll go down. But if you're, continue to be satisfied with the terms and want to keep proceeding, I mean, the last time we did it under the Forest Highways Act, it, I mean, it went all the way to the point of, within months of letting a construction contract, and, with, due to the issues of ESA and everything else, that, at that point, the commissioner wrote a letter saying, we're, we're done with this kind of intent to go ahead and cooperate. We're, we're going to, it, it appears the project's deteriorating, and we have no intent of taking jurisdiction. So, you're not, you know, I, I don't think you're ever signing anything up until about that point that the, the capital improvement project is implemented. So, it's a long process to get through. I mean, I think they're programming these projects for, like, 24 through 28 fiscal years. So, I mean, even if you're successful, you're, you're a ways out of the whole entire process that it'll take through with Federal Highways, of planning, design, everything, all, you know, input from the public, all these different things, it's, it's a long process.
We just wouldn't want to initiate the agreement, take on the Fed, the Fed intent for us to have, name us as primary responsibility for maintenance, and then have a future Forest Service leave us holding the bag, and not want to collaborate at all anymore, free or whatever, whatever, and say, yeah, you guys are holding the bag, and we're not interested anymore, see you, and then, then we're going to be going, that's not what we thought we were going to have, you know. I mean, as long as we have local people, I'm sure we're okay. Nate from Thompson Falls, and Carol from Superior, but you never know. Okay? Yeah, I'd be interested how, how the Idaho County there does the-
Check, you want to check.
Yeah, and, because I know, I think it's a really good thing, and I've wondered for years why we don't tie into their paved road and have those tourists keep driving on over, especially now that people are, like, moving here and wanting to live here, and recreation's a big thing, that road would be perfect for many, many things, not just logging, but-
I've got a question for Nate, since he's right here. How does the Prospect Highway get maintained? It's a state highway, it is a state highway.
And they, and they don't plow in the winter, it's closed, you know?
Right.
And that might be, when we hit through this flap, if we get, you know, picked for further review, it might actually end up being a state highway. I'm not saying it's going to, but, but it's, it's a type of thing where the, I remember when Nate said they came in, they, they were, you know, saying, whatever you had estimated, we're going to do it a lot different, and stuff like that, so.
Probably not. I mean, right on the application, it's going to ask us for the Federal Land Management Agency, who is cosponsoring the project, who is supporting the project, and the state local or entity who is going to take the lead on the project. So, if you don't have the state highway on board at that time, they're not at the table, but you're not going to have their signature. So, at this point, it is, nobody's approached the state. I don't even know who that would really be.
People wouldn't do their own.
Yeah. Well, if you are, you'll want to get his signature as a, and it might be worth it, since the first mile is under, currently under state jurisdiction, so there's opportunities there.
So, Nate, you know, we talked about this, my question is, there, there's so much negotiation to occur, because we don't really know how much it costs. We're, we're, we're 30,000 feet, we don't know what the maintenance agreement looks like, we don't know what they're, you know, once those guys come out here, there's going to be a deep dive, and we're going to reveal all that, and we're going to look at all, all the funding options. Do you think it's valuable enough to get them to the table, knowing that we just flat out aren't going to commit to the maintenance? We don't have the resources to do it. But we would like you to come here and talk about, and look at, you know, these maintenance agreements and other, other aspects, because the benefit of this road paving, you know, benefits a whole, you know, the bull trout, and the sediment, and the timber industry, and the tourist industry, and, you know, air quality. I mean, it just really checks a lot of boxes that I think Federal Highway Administration might come out and say, well, Mineral County, we understand that, but maybe we have these other options we could pursue. Do you see that as a possibility?
They might, yeah. They wouldn't do it under the premise of flap, but they might come out to see, I mean, they know, I'm talking to them daily, and, and it's been something I've spent the last three months doing. I mean, the Federal Highways knows that the Little Joe, there are, that's the other thing to know, there are other funding opportunities, so I don't want to put any undue pressure. This is one opportunity. We could get a highway bill. We have in the Forest Service the Federal Lands Transportation Program, which does allow us to obtain Federal Highways dollars, but it's just that the whole region, all of Region 1 gets $1 million right now. That's not going to, we just take care of little things here and there.
Might be a mile of road.
So, but if new infrastructure builds, the Washington office is calling for big projects, so.
That's careful.
It's not a guarantee, so I think that these guys have done a nice job of presenting you guys with an opportunity, whether you guys want to try to use your words wisely enough to get them to the table, at least to come out and look at it, and, but like I said, under the premise of a flap, if you say we have no intent of taking responsibility, if you use maybe some of the wording, you said, they might come take a look and say, hey, let's talk about this some more. But if it's a flat out, no, they're probably not going to, they, they got a limited amount of time. They got to tour a lot of different places when their technical advisory comes out to review their top-tier projects. So, you know, that's just the facts.
Well, it sounded like we probably could talk about this a little more, but we're running out of time, so unless there's anything really important, we'll sum it up, and how do you want to close, we'll keep your cards, stay in touch, and-
Yeah, so, so we'll work with you to wordsmith a letter that maybe you're comfortable with, and, and show some interest, and, you know, in my opinion, Jackson Hole, Wyoming, we get this project, do they have the funding? We, we get a lot of grant funding for Mineral County and St. Regis, and a lot of it's based on low-income to middle-income qualifications. And I just think we shouldn't be disqualified because we don't have the resources.
Right.
So, we would make that argument, and I, I, we don't know, we can't talk to the Federal Highway Administration.
Especially when we've got over 80% of federal land.
Yeah. I mean, it's already done, let's set up a flagpole and see what happens.
Why don't we have the resources?
And if we, if, if they come in and say, no, Mineral County, you have to take over, maintenance, then it's a deal breaker for us, and then we look for other options. So.
Okay. Well, thanks for bringing it, reviving this idea. It's going to be considered strong. All right, Mr. Temple.
Good morning. So, the Rural Fire Board in its entirety is here with you this morning. They have received a petition to annex property out in the Tarkio area to the Superior Rural Fire District. And a little bit of background before we kind of jump into the meat of this is that, at Mumm Arca 63, which is just past the Tarkio off-ramp, starts French Towns District. And so, we run out on the highway all winter long, responding to semi-drivers and the car crashes, and that becomes a challenge for us, because it's a long run from Superior Downtown Fire Station out to the Mumm Arca 63. And what happens in those cases is we get compensated from the semi-drivers, and, so there's a, a funding source that comes from some of that work we do on the freeway. But, the fire department's desire has been, certainly since I've been there, John Woodland started that, to go out and, and participate and help stop fires. And we did it under the argument, when we got outside of our rural district, that if we had a house fire, that we would get compensated. We'd bail the owner for being out there. And that helped justify to the people who are paying taxes in our rural district, why we're out there beyond our district operating, that if we go to a structural fire, we'll get paid. If we go out there on a wildland fire, which we get, especially along the edges of the freeway, we do that under mutual aid agreement, essentially, with the Forest Service. So, those have been the longstanding practices. Unfortunately, it's called a no-man's land, because, you know, those are not real hard and fine rules, and they've kind of changed over the years a bit, but we've been pretty consistent in the last, I'd call it, 14, 15 years of going out there and, and engaging in, in fires. What's happened is, a couple of those property owners who are in the fringe of the forest area have reached a point where they're unable to get insurance. And some of those are valuable homes, and that's a big issue to them. They approached the rural district here with a petition, feeling that it would, it would greatly improve their ability to get insurance if they were part of the rural fire district. The challenge is, that every one of those insurance companies kind of acts differently, and with that Paradise Fire in California, they ran from California, and the winery fires, they're running from California, and so they're all seem to have different tolerance levels of accepting risk in the, in the timbered areas. So, these two guys, two big landowners out there, kind of ran up against that this last year, and that drove the petition to annex to the rural district. From a fire chief's standpoint, we can't legitimately say that we can provide fire protection equivalent to what we're giving everywhere else, unless we had a station there. So, our starting point is the fire department, was this really requires having some equipment out there, some trained personnel, and a, a physical location. So, that kind of drove us to the point where now the rural board is beginning to discuss whether they want to get involved, how they might get involved, what those conditions might be, because they've got a petition in front of them that they have to act on shortly. That petition jumps from them, if they approve it, to you, for final approval, to annex into the rural district. If they turn that down, it dies there, at the, at the Rural Fire Board. So, they've got a tough decision in front of them, they've been discussing, and they're all here and would like to speak, but they've been discussing the terms under which they might be able to participate by allowing an annexation into the, into the rural district, into the Superior Fire Rural District. The tax rate, I just leave with one last thing, is that the tax rate's quite small. We're six mils. It doesn't generate a great deal of money. So, what happens to happen in order to make this feasible, even though you've got some pretty wealthy property owners, and some large valued estates out there, it's going to require some upfront capital. Somebody's got to put some money or equipment up to make this happen. And, and it's just like your road project, where we've got to scramble to find money to build or buy, and it, so it's going to take a real combined effort, because the tax rate itself is just basically going to support operations. So, that, Dan's here as the chair, and the rest of the board's here.
My major concerns are out there is, like, is the funding, without a doubt. And then I have the concern of just, I would like to know how many more individual people out there would be interested in coming in on board. I can't see it really happening just to satisfy two people. And then, the other issue that I have is trained personnel, qualified personnel. Now, they're talking wildland, and this and that and everything. I know for the insurance companies, it's also going to require a structural engine, and structural people, not just people who are trained in wildland. Wildland training takes quite a bit for, just to become a firefighter. One, you have to have basically four days of full classes, 130, 190, L-180, 200, ICS 700. Okay, then, you get a task book, firefighter one, fill it out, then you go to firefighter two, fill it out, and then to get a qualified engine boss. I have signed off on several engine bosses over the years, and the average engine boss takes three to five years, just to get the task book filled out. If you just do the task once, that doesn't qualify you. You do it twice, that doesn't qualify you. You do it three times, you'll get signed off on that task. And so, I see a major issue with trained personnel, and then for us to take on the responsibility of saying, yes, we're going to provide you fire protection, without the interest of the people out there really supporting it and backing it, just more than two, I can't see this happening. I just don't see the feasibility of it. That's the way that I, the way I look at it. Our response time from here, you'd be lucky to make it there in half an hour flying down the road. And on an initial attack, just one little wildland engine out there, and those personnel manning it, I can't see how we can provide the protection. What I'd like to see is our support, as much as we can possibly support them, and really for the legalities of it and everything, they form their own district, just like the West End, called East End, and we help them form that district. But for, for me to sign off and say that, yes, I'm going to support this, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, my answer at the present time is, no, I will not. It will not happen. Because I just think we're putting, really putting the cart in front of the horse. And what happens if we can't raise, or come up with the money and the funding for this project and stuff, and turn around, and everything's halfway started out there, and we've got to go to the county, to the taxpayers, telling them they're going to increase their taxes to support the Tarkio Fire Station? It won't fly.
Does it have to go to the vote of the, the, where you're putting the district in?
Well, they submit a petition saying that they want to be annexed into the existing rural fire district at the existing tax rate. So, it's only those people that are joining the district that vote, if you will, by a petition. What Dan's talking about is, if you find you've got to raise taxes, raise the rate on the entire rural district, then that goes to a vote of the entire rural district. But, you know, raising taxes for somebody who's already part of a district that can't perceive an additional benefit would be a difficult sell. You'd pretty much have to find a way of funding that station on its own, from the people who are part of that, that district. And it, it would take, having them contribute upfront capital, equipment, building, land, you know, to get it started. So, you know, that's, those are legitimate hurdles that we've got to cross, and have to address. The work that we've started to get the petition in front of us doesn't mean The work that we've started to get the petition in front of us doesn't mean that that's the only way it can appear. The rural board has said, and it wasn't just Dan, it was all of the rural board, that said that we need to reach out to a bigger group of people. We need to reach out to the people that would benefit from that station. And the way fire ratings work is you've got to be within a five mile response radius of the station and you have to be within a five mile radius of the water supply. And Tarkio isn't easy to get water supply, so those wells are deep. The water supply is actually at the end of the Tarkio bench in Nomadi Creek, out there at the fold of the Messiah where they've got a hydrant. So, that, those are kind of two limiting parameters of what your district would look like. They've got to be within five miles of that water supply and five miles of your station to get some benefit. But, the tax rate would be set upon annexation and affect just those new people that we're annexing. And under Montana law, you've got the right to say no and be left out of an annexation. So, one of the reasons out on the West End, we get such patchwork property on the West End that's part of the rural district is that, you know, in the past, people added development by development and they actually had some that were taken out of those rural districts by vote too. So, you end up with a patchwork of pieces that are in the rural district. And I think we, as fire departments, we've all had to confront this, whether it's Frenchtown, Superior, St. Regis, or West End, by saying, if you're not in our rural district, we're going to bill you. And we take that extra step when we show up, confront the property owner if they're there, do you want us to put your fire out? And, you know, if their house is burning, it's quite likely they're going to say yes. But, you know, we've got, those are the steps we have to go through. If you, if we've got a fire, we've got to make sure that we bill for our people. We adopted a policy among the four fire departments on billing rates so that we were consistent among the different departments, so that, you know, we covered that base and could argue consistency.
Where currently, where does the Superior Rural line end?
Lozo. Yeah, and all that new development at Lozo, Westfall area, is in our rural district. We've got the Big Eddie, we've got the Riverbend area that's all in our rural district now. And you get out to Maumarker 63, which is just past Tarkio, that begins Frenchtown's area. And Frenchtown, Joe Callen, has clearly said at our rural board meeting several times that they have no interest in coming any further, that that's going to be their permanent line right there. And this study area that we've been working on would abut right up against that.
Well, yeah, because like what Dan's talking about, response time, when I was still working the road, I'd be out there by Fish Creek and it'd take forever for them to get there. They weren't coming from Petty Creek, they weren't coming from Alberton, they weren't coming from Frenchtown. The units came from the Y, they have a base station there. And your fire department was standing there before they even got there, just for mutual aid. And so, they, that's a problem everywhere, Dan, where volunteers aren't working.
Volunteers and the response time and stuff and training issues and it's a, you know, it's a huge responsibility to put another station out there. I mean, it is. And I don't want to not be able to meet that responsibility is my major concern. I don't understand how we can meet that responsibility. I just, sure, if the Forest Service is available, yeah, they'll respond and they'll probably get there just about as quick as we will. But, what if they're not available? Like with the Prospector and the I-90 complex. The I-90 complex, they wouldn't have Forest Service bring on that fire after the first day. It was all contract engine in Frenchtown and other fire departments and stuff. But, and we responded out there to the corners on the base I-90. It took us about forty-five minutes to get there and we lost it.
Well, we've got the other four board members here. Were there anything that you guys wanted to add to the discussion as well?
You put a lot of time in this, Steve, already.
Yeah.
And are they aware that they're going to do something anyway? Warden and McClure, I mean, they've got McClure about fire engines?
Well, the, yes, are they aware? I, after your last board meeting, I went to the McClures and told them that you had several things that you wanted to yet do before you acted on the petition. One of them, you wanted to reach out to the board, to the commissioners, and brief them, and that you wanted to reach out to the neighboring property owners to give them an opportunity to participate, those that would be within those five mile radiuses and not in Frenchtown's area. And those were the two big issues, reaching out to more people, having a community meeting, and then approaching the commissioners. So, they're aware of it.
My challenge with it, I read the petition several times. The petition's good as far as I'm concerned, the petition itself. My challenge is, like you said, getting the people involved. You know, it's before the commissioners now, they can go ahead and talk to their people in that area as far as I'm concerned. And if we can get more people involved in it, I'm totally happy with the idea, so.
Yeah, if there was enough people involved in it, I mean, almost there was like a dozen people or eight or ten even. My attitude might change. I mean, it's, you know, my mind at the present, which is two people, like I said, is basically no. I just, I just can't see how you can make it fly. And if things did go south on us and stuff, and like I said, if we had to go to the rest of the people for more funding, it wouldn't go over big.
We realize you've got to have volunteers to do this. You've got to have more than two people to volunteer to do it.
Yeah.
And we've got to look for the volunteers for that. I mean, the two people that are involved in it now, they're willing to participate and they've put a lot of money into it already and a lot of effort in it. Steve put tons and tons of time and effort into it, so.
Mary Jo.
Well, I'm not on the road board, but representing the Tarkio area and the fire warden deal. We did have a preliminary meeting, Fall, was it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And gathered quite a few people that I would say the majority of them were interested in doing something, but it was so preliminary, we couldn't really present to them what.
Didn't pin anybody down, for sure.
Right, right. And, you know, since then, because of the two residents that have lost their insurance and stuff, they've pushed forward faster than what we have kept up to them or whatever. So, I, you know, I think there is interest in there. I mean, and if you, you know, gather up a lot of interested people, there is people, you know, that already have training and have a lot of that behind them. So, I mean, it's not like, it's not like, you know, I tried to get an interest a few years ago and at that time, there was mostly older people that was a little late in their career to try to take on a new fire district kind of thing or whatever. So, you know, I think, I think that if we went out now and canvassed and got, you know, the real, the real numbers and stuff and the interest, it might show more. Because I was trying to do the five mile thing, but the water source is a little different deal. But, you know, there's, I mean, we can come all the way to Monty Turner's place, you know, as far as that far out. And then, you've got all that stuff down below the Tarkio exit, you know, there's some pretty high dollar places over in there too. So, I don't know what they're doing. We have not had trouble getting insurance, but we're not in that same category as some of them. But, we pay a lot, you know, so it would benefit, I think, everyone out there. If there was something, I don't know if annexing is the right way or, I don't know. You know, we'd have to get everyone together again and see really where the, where the interest, you know, what direction they want to go. How did Lozo, how did you get Lozo annexed without the five mile?
They actually made the radius from our station. And the Lozo, Westfall, I wasn't chief then, so I don't know what the arguments were to add it into the district.
I mean, that's a little farther than five miles, so I just was wondering if.
Yeah, maybe I need to go back and touch base with Woodland on that to better understand it. A couple, Carl?
I don't think if we don't get most of the people involved, there will be enough money to support it, to keep it going.
Right.
The big money people are willing to help get it started, but who's going to maintain it?
Yeah, our challenges with any capital project are getting the site. You know, the site's the first challenge because once you put it on the ground, it'll be there forever. The second challenge, once you get your site, is how are you going to build your building? And then, the challenge beyond that is how are you going to get your equipment to be in the building? And then, how are you going to staff it and train it with the people? So, there's a whole laundry list of challenges out there and you need some really motivated people behind it to get their arms around it and keep moving it forward. We've been fortunate so far in that we're working with the State of Montana to try to identify a site there at Nomadi Creek and Tarkio Loop Road, which is an old school. And in nineteen ninety-nine, that school site got given back to the State of Montana DNRC. And we've been in contact with the DNRC and they have been working on unwrapping that chain of title to make sure that they own it. And then, it's going to take somebody like Denali to get behind it in order to make a transfer of ownership occur. The property owners have said, the two property owners, admittedly, they've got a lot of acreage, but there's only two of them, have said, we'll provide your equipment. Okay, and.
A lot of money.
Yeah, that's a pretty tempting carrot. When we approach them with, well, we're going to have to figure out a way to build the building, maybe we can get the youth corps out of Bitterroot Valley to build the building for us if we've got a site. Those property owners said, we'll just get an architect, we'll design it and we'll build it for you. So, there are some resources there that we can use, but we've still got some real challenges with the number of people that might participate, getting the word out, dealing with the training issue, getting volunteers. Mary Jo said almost every time we've met that your real big problem here is going to be getting volunteers to run that station. And that's true everywhere for us.
Like I said, it's true for Frenchtown. I mean, they're coming all the way out to Fish Creek Exit and they, they're coming from the Y.
Yeah, I've been extremely fortunate. We had three new volunteers this month in our rural department. And, you know, instead of there being Ken and my age, they're, you know, in their twenties. And those are the kind of people that we want to try to capture. But, it's a challenge to get volunteers. And but, you know, we either continue to work on it or we give up on it, one of the two. It's to that point.
And like I say, the, you know, it's tempting when there's a window of opportunity, you know. Maybe right now, it looks like there's not a whole lot of homes out there. I mean, there are some that are being built, but I mean, that Tarkio area, not that I'm condoning it, but it really has the potential to explode if one of those large landowners decides to subdivide out there. There's going to be, well, look what happened at the Beswick place, you know. I mean, there could become a great need and it'd be really nice if the opportunity for all that fire trucks and building and all that was.
That could be a selling point too, to have fire protection because.
Yeah, without fire protection, you can't subdivide.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, the county planning department has been, has been real supportive in new subdivision development. They've been insisting that they join the rural district. So, what you're going to see, and that started with Tim and Andy's picked that up, is those individual subdivisions, when they start occurring, that's why Westfall's in the rural board, rural district. There's one out on Quartz Loop that recently subdivided and Tim asked them to be, or Andy asked them to be, join the Rural Fire District. So, you're right, for property to subdivide and develop, they're going to have to have fire protection of some sort.
The one thing on training right now that is beneficial to us is the online training. It's become available. In fact, that's about the only way you get training anymore. There are very few training providers. Rocky Mountain is the last one, pretty much. And so, a person can, rather than taking four days off of work to go get their training, they can take it online. And it's pretty decent courses. I mean, you know, take the test afterwards and stuff and it's, it's beneficial. So, if it took a guy two weeks to get his certification online, so be it.
Mr. Ache, did you have any input?
Well, I just look at this as its process. And in the rural board, it was like, you know, we're trying to make this decision. And the way I looked at it was like, we need to involve more people because small town, you don't want to just say, jump out, say, guess what we're going to do? And, you know, so that's what we're here, mostly to inform and to keep you guys, is the way I look at it. But, Steve's doing a great job of moving down the road slowly and we just didn't want to get too far ahead without involvement.
Yeah. Well, appreciate that. Rumors, rumors in a small town get around pretty quick and stuff. I've had some people call me and ask me, hey, what the hell's going on? You know, I can't tell you, I can't tell you who they are, but what's happening?
Well, it's the same with the.
What's going on, you know?
It's the same with the residents and we can't really approach the residents until we have a plan.
Right.
You know, we've got the land, we have funding for the trucks, you guys want to be a part of this. You can't just go out there and say, well, what if we, would you, you know, that's just what I can't do.
Well, there might be some people that are more interested now because, we had somebody come in here from St. Regis on the golf course that got their fire protection dropped. Like you say, depending on the insurance company, whether it be whoever, and then they have to sit there and scramble to find someone that'll write, underwrite them.
Oh, they got dropped on the golf course. Holy cow.
Couple of years ago, yeah.
Up at Eureka, after the fire up there and stuff, the rich Canadians, there's some nice places up there, don't have fire protection. I've had half a dozen calls to go up there and do fuel medication for different people and this.
So, some people might weigh that, not having any insurance at all versus paying a little bit for an annexation of a coverage, might find it more appealing. You know, I'd be interested in your new canvassing poll to see, I think that's a good first start, see if people are.
I really think it'd be more beneficial for them to form their own district if they can.
Well, the only problem with that.
With our support.
So, I, I'm from Alberton and long ago, the commissioner decided that.
Yeah, Roger Hurst did, yeah.
Yeah, they thought, well, there's not anybody to even be a chief, let alone where we're going to find volunteers. So.
That's quite, quite correct.
And we pay, we pay eighty-six thousand dollars every year. We write a check to the Frenchtown Fire Department in Missoula County to provide the Mineral County people protection. And so, I mean, yeah, you want them to have their own district, but I'm saying, if you have someone that knows how to train and knows, is a chief and is a mover and a shaker, I wouldn't want to let, I wouldn't want to try to find somebody else to do that in a different district. That's just my opinion because I know now how much money we spend for an out of county.
I can understand that.
We don't, St. Regis and you guys don't collect eighty-six thousand dollars a year.
No. I wish we did.
Yeah, well.
We could have bought a better truck.
So, I'm just saying that you don't want to lose leadership if you don't have to. That's just my opinion. Because like you said, it's hard to keep people up with their training and know what they're supposed to train for and knows how to, I mean, he knows more about how to run annex, I mean, he's got experience. Why would you want to try and find somebody to do that another spot?
Now, I just can sit back and remember over the fifty-five years on the fire, or lives of fire here, as many as forty and as little as four.
And it depends what kind of an outfit you have. If it's a professional, smooth running department, more people want to join it, you know?
Yeah, that's very true.
Yeah, more people want to join, we've got good equipment now.
Right.
We've got good people.
Well, I think people, you know, they see the fire department come there, you know, now, so it's like.
A false assumption that they're covered?
Yeah, but, and it's the two big property owners that are having issues, you know, but they're, but it's big issues for them. They have a lot of money invested in their structures and so they, I mean, they're, they're looking for a way to be able to stay there and, you know, I mean, they pay a lot of, they pay a lot of money to Mineral County, you know, so I think, you know, we need to help, I mean, help facilitate, if we can, you know. Right now, in the last few years since we've been out there, we have our own little system of call, you know, we, everybody just goes if they see smoke, you know, and they've got some fire pumpers and some different things out there, but that's not okay with the insurance companies.
Right.
You can't say, well, we have, you know, I mean, they have their own trucks even at the colony, but that doesn't buy off on the insurance, so.
Well, we ran over on the previous one, so we ran over for you guys, but we have another one right after this. So, does anybody have any final thoughts or?
Good question is, how are we going to go about getting?
Good question is, how are we going to go about getting the other people involved?
Well, like Mr. Temple pointed out, it's really a consideration. First step is that you guys, the fire board, and, you know, we're kind of the final ones to be involved in any of this, so it's... And we defer to the boards with their opinions and their recommendations, so... Like Mr. Acey pointed out, we're just kind of being updated on what's kind of being thought about or so if anyone calls us, at least we kind of know what to say back, but it falls in, falls in your guys' court still at this point.
Maybe we need to convene outside and we can just talk about that.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea.
Well, thank you guys for coming. The next meeting, sorry to keep you guys waiting, it's the revisions to the Pioneer Council Bus Barn. Lynn and Monty, or at least Lynn.
Well, yeah, Monty's getting a crown done, so I don't know what that says, that he'd rather go to a dentist's appointment than be here with us, but, you know.
He's all, he blamed it on the cupcakes he's been eating, didn't he, his cavity?
Oh, I know. He didn't tell me that.
He didn't tell you that?
No, and I'd like to introduce Toby McCool. He's from Morrison Merrily. He's the one that did this stuff. And I figured it might be better to just have him come and answer your questions rather than doing this relay that we've been doing.
Okay, yeah, well, we'll hold off for a second and then Dwayne will be back. So you work out of Missoula, sir?
Yeah, I'm in the Missoula office. Yeah, I kind of enjoyed the drive this morning. It was like, oh. And I actually got here a little early and just drove down the street. Just no traffic, you know, it's just like, oh, I'm doing 15 and I love this. You know, I grew up in a small town and...
Which town was that?
Well, I was born in Haver and then grew up Columbia Falls.
Oh, yeah.
And I remember the days of that where you would, I mean, you could just drive. It was like, half the time I wouldn't even pay attention to the road because there's no one to hit.
Yeah, correct. How old were you when you left Haver?
Um, seventh grade.
Seventh grade, oh, yeah. Highline kid.
Yeah.
You might know my brother-in-law, he owned the Dairy Queen.
Got it, Darlo. Can stop me and see Darlo's because he used to work for us.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, he was, he was, yes, he was a surveyor for us.
What did it go at? Okay, this is Commissioner Simon. Lynn brought Representative Morrison Merrily, the engineer on the drawing.
Toby McCool.
Good to meet you.
Okay, take it away, Lynn. Or Toby, whoever.
I think I sent you, or I sent Monty and he was supposed to send you the five proposals that Toby put together. Move in the driveway and stuff. Did you bring those with you so we can...
I have, yeah.
Pass them up.
Did you get any of them?
I didn't get the email.
Oh, okay.
None of us did.
Well, Monty, no more cupcakes for him.
It's possible I missed it, but...
Okay, well, we'll blame it on Monty. We'll blame it on Monty. He's not here to defend himself.
Anybody else?
No, I think we've got. So he went through, moved the driveways that came straight off from the building. He did some where he also moved the building so that it was parallel to the interstate. Also made arrangements so if you extend, decided to extend McKinley all the way out basically to the fence, that they could have an entrance and exit there. The one thing that caught my attention is if you run it straight down from the building, you're going to have an 8% grade, correct?
There's that little bit of a climb there.
There's a ditch there, yeah.
Yeah, so you have the ditch and then it kind of, if you took McKinley and kind of ran it, you know, it does have a little bit of a climb, so you cut a little bit more, you know, to get into there. But, I mean, I just kind of playing with how we want to set that thing up and situate where it would be.
The first one was fine. I just had a second thought, was thinking of maximizing. There's so little county land in this county and that little piece is kind of in town. So we were just trying to make sure that we didn't rob any future tenants or ideas from encroachment or space.
Yeah, and Lynn had mentioned, you know, the potential for some other things to go out there. And I was like, well, if we had an idea of what those look like, you know, maybe they work together better. You know, what, you know, how they flow. So, yeah, we were just kind of spitballing some ideas on, you know, pictures worth a thousand words kind of thing and...
So on this one page too, and there's a little writing that says steep driveway, that's 8%?
Yeah, it starts to get a little, little steep there. I mean, it's usually not, I mean, 8% is not horrible, but it just kind of depends on how it comes in. Usually, you know, we want to make sure it's kind of flat at the intersection of the main road so that we have a place to stop and start from and, you know, not cause problems.
So is this steep dip right in the middle or is it near the edge of the roadway?
It's, I think if it's on McKinley coming out, it's pushed back a little further.
So the only concern I had is if that driveway were to get iced over, how difficult would it be for those vans to make that turn at the bottom? Because you cannot get studded tires for those minivans.
So this one would have a steep, if we extended McKinley?
Well, if we extend McKinley, I think McKinley would basically, would be the ability to flatten McKinley out a little bit, you know, and make it a more universal access for anything else that's going on in the area, you know. And then that one wouldn't have a steep driveway because I'm envisioning McKinley kind of ramping up a little bit. That driveway would just tee a 90 from McKinley.
Yeah.
So I don't think that one would have a bad...
And this one with the current moats, does that one have?
That one would have a little bit, yeah. Anything that ties into that moat directly from the site would probably have. And it is a kind of a, it's tipped to the north and so, you know, you're not going to get the sun to melt that snow off as easily. It'd be a little bit more of a ice patch.
What's the approximate distance if it was a proposed new McKinley from the driveway back up to the real McKinley? What's the, what's the...
There's a, I don't know right off, there's a scale bar off to the right. I'll have to look at it again real quick.
I don't know, which I can tell you, we don't have the money to do that. Especially with building costs the way they are.
So, I don't know, we were trying to kind of tuck that, towards that property line, you know. McKinley really is, minimizes the footprint, I guess, on this parcel just because instead of utilizing access out to moats, it ends up just turning and being a shorter drive to McKinley. So, you know, it saves a lot of the land, I guess.
Yeah, you'd have more area for parking or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder what the cities, if they ever intend to make that McKinley go where it's posted. But if that's going to be more costly or maybe those other driveway ideas are fine, I think are better because it stops the problem I was concerned about. I don't know which one of those options, in your opinion, has the lesser of the grade or the easier of...
Anything that kind of goes, you know, turns and would tie into that McKinley would be probably easiest, you know, as far as road slopes and, you know. Because you can, you can kind of see like these contours on the original version that's kind of the background for all of those hand-drawn ones. You know, there's, it's pretty tight contours as that road comes out. So you, you know, we were talking before, we'd have to flatten it, which means we're flattening it at the bottom for safety. Then as we come up, you know, that cut's going to eat up more land too. You know, you just, every time you're dealing with these slopes, you start to utilize a lot more land just to make, you know, safety kind of a priority.
So do you have any idea what the cost differential would be from, you know, paving the moats up here so we have access and getting rid of that stuff?
It's probably, I mean...
Would it be pretty much a push?
Yeah, linear footage-wise, it would be pretty close. I mean, you're still doing, once you have a piece of equipment out there, you know, and you're moving a little bit of dirt. Two more passes to widen it usually doesn't cost you much more, you know.
Okay, well, we might have it then.
I mean, if you were to cut, you know, 60 feet off of here and add 60 feet to here, you know, that's kind of, and whatever else we would need to...
But is that our property land right there?
Yep. But if you look at that right away, you know, McKinley right away, if they were to extend that...
So is McKinley right away, is that city or county?
I believe that's still the city, isn't it? Or is the... Where is the quote, entering Oliverville, entering Superior Town Line? Oh, yes.
Before Sherlong.
Sherlong?
Before Sherlong, yeah. Because I know Sherlong is at the county, or at the city.
Yes, it's Clark.
Oh.
All those guys are at the county, is out of the city.
Yeah, it's out there by where those new apartments were built, right, those new flats?
I think so, yes, right around there.
But though, I think those new apartments and then the old golf course, that was all annexed in. But, you know, like Boskinis and Clarks and all that is now...
Back to square one, would you be willing to, you know, give us access so that we could maybe move over and just pave that for you? And I guess the other upside of that is, and I don't know if it's an approved subdivision, but on one of the maps it had like Fifth and all those streets, that grid. That way, if you still wanted to vacate moats later on, you could do that fairly easily without affecting our operations.
Right, because you'd have the McKinley Street.
And maybe it could be, you know, instead of being a full, full road section, you know, with all the requirements for county, maybe it's something that's...
Could start off as a driveway but have the potential to be a road one day.
That's kind of designed in there so it's, it's like just extendable and, you know, it builds upon itself and grows.
I think that would probably be smarter because like you said, we don't know what the future brings with the plat that's out there that's not being followed for the streets. We'd rather have you be on the street than something that's... Yeah, and if you said, like you said, it started out as kind of like just an extension of the driveway and then one day when it was full-blown McKinley, it would be easy just to expand it out.
Just expand it and finish off the edges or whatever.
Cool.
That's what I'm thinking.
All right, that works for me too.
Well, good.
Yeah, I kind of blew up my computer a while back, so now I have this. They gave, instead of giving me a new one, they gave me an old one until the new one comes in. I tried to fire that thing up and it's, it's like having a stone tablet, you know. This morning I was like beating on them, like, "Come on!" So I just grabbed what I had.
You gotta hit it. I got one idea.
So are you competing these numbers with an abacus now?
Yeah, yeah. Sundials and the whole...
Sundials.
You have my empathy. I'm doing the same thing at work and I'm fighting two computers for a whole week and ready to kill myself.
It's nice when the computer's faster than you, but when you become faster than the computer, it's too frustrating.
Okay, so you got enough information to, if you get a computer?
Yeah, and so it would be like that, that option, three roughly, where we would just make, set it up so it's kind of that.
Okay. And the building would run this way?
Yeah, I mean, we can still move it even, we can flip that, put the driveway over to here.
Okay, so if we could...
They would make it a less extension, yeah, move it up.
Yeah, but if we can, and it's, I mean, we can certainly deal with it if we can't, but our vision was to have two garage doors so with the vans, they just pull them in and then they can... Yeah, because most of your accidents occur when they're backing up, even with the cameras and everything else.
Right.
But if we can't do that, that's fine.
I mean, for money reasons, you know, even if we didn't use the access off the back, we just make sure we have space for it later.
Okay.
You know, we just look at which, obviously we need access first and then we'll start to apply dollars to, where we can cut off and at least get one side accessed.
Okay, yeah, whatever works. Yeah, because I'm, I mean, if they build down here, they're either going to have to access moats or I don't know how they get to here unless they run a road.
And there is, I think it's Sixth, right? That has kind of near the interstate that parallels. And then another right away, which, like you said, if they're following the grid, you know...
Okay, that works.
I don't know if they will.
Okay. That makes sense. Could we, or would it be, if we put the building on that side? This side, so it faced that way, maybe set it like here? Because we really don't need a whole lot of parking spaces because if there's officer service, there's going to only be two at most probably. And the drivers, you know, would just, whatever, one would park their cars. So we don't need a lot of parking spaces. They can always park out on here and walk.
So it'd be kind of a combination of, we kind of had it rotated like this.
Yeah.
Just rotated like that, but we're really just having the access in the front and then just accessing McKinley out there.
Right, and then if we could do, you know, just so they bring the vans that way, that might work.
I still don't remember.
Okay, cool.
Get something.
All right.
Look at it.
Okay. Well, that's been nice meeting you. Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, that was short and sweet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's usually that way with these guys.
Yeah.
Nice. I'll go for Ask Darlo over here.
Okay, all right. Well, that concludes that. Thanks, everybody. 11 o'clock, we have fragrance-free building discussion. And there was talk before about the policy and and I wanted to make sure everybody knew that there was some thoughts being discussed, so I'm glad you're here because input is helpful, especially for me on this subject, so... Who wants to start, who brought, put on the agenda, who wants to start it off? What are we talking about?
I don't mind starting it off. It's not necessarily my issue, but it is an issue that has been brought forth and it does affect me as well. In conferring quite a while ago with our Mako attorney about scents in the building, she gave us a policy that we could use if we wanted to become scent-free, as many buildings are. And so I've included that for the commissioners. And it's just an explanation of how lotions, sprays, perfumes have effects on your employees and your community as they enter the building. So from there, that's...
How was our current policy worded? Do we have a copy of that?
Yes, it says, "The ability to perform one's job may be adversely affected by scented substances, perfume, lotion, oil, and scented deodorants. Staff members are encouraged to inform their supervisor or department head if a reasonable accommodation is required regarding the reaction to a scented product. The county may request a reasonable documentation to support the accommodation request. The county may instruct county employees to stop coming to work with scented substances that bother their fellow employees." That's what it currently says.
Has anybody done that? Has anybody asked for a reasonable accommodation?
Nobody has asked for a reasonable accommodation, but I can tell you that having attended several meetings, I have had people come to me, I've had people that have had to leave meetings here in this room because of perfumes. It's not, you know, I know you all know that I have a sensitivity to smells, but most recently, within the last two weeks, there was a meeting where a member had to get up and leave because the perfume was so overwhelming.
I can understand perfumes and stuff. I know that I will use lavender because of my victims in order to calm them down, in order to calm their children down. I would be adverse to having a scent-free building just on that unless I could ask for a reasonable accommodation for my victims. In the opposite direction as opposed to what you're proposing here.
So what it sounds like, the way it's currently written, is that if somebody has excessive perfume or a smell, incense or alcohol that bothers, they can go and say, "Hey, please don't, that bothers me. Can you turn, put off the incense or stop wearing the perfume excessively?"
Or cologne.
Or cologne.
Or cologne, yeah, because today it was cologne. I was going to walk in here, it was a building, a room of men. And I was going to say, "Okay, who's the man doused in cologne?" and I was gonna say, okay, who's the man doused in cologne? Because it was just really overwhelming.
Sorry.
It's Dwayne.
And I don't have a very good nose, I mean, I could never, I could never hardly smell a dunk on the highway, let alone perfume here. Uh, so to me, it doesn't, I, I, it doesn't bother me, but so for those of you that it does, or if you think policy needs to be more stringent or just the way it is, I guess that's our discussion today.
Well, I think that it is, it shouldn't be a person's job to have to leave a meeting because of somebody having oversprayed perfume. And I don't think that an employee should have to go knocking on a door and saying, gosh, that smell coming from your room is, is affecting me. Not, it's not, not that we don't like the smell, not that type of thing, but that it's overwhelming and it does cause breathing issues and it causes headaches. I just hate to see the person who it's affecting have to be the one to stand up and say, your perfume is overwhelming.
But isn't that, isn't that the reasonable accommodation that's already in our policies for that person to have to do that?
But that's why there's... It's them telling the individual, maybe they can go to that person's supervisor and the supervisor can have a conversation with their employee.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that is presently what it says and again, if, I, I wish that you could have been in the meeting within the last two weeks where a member had to leave because of it. I know that a lot of people are not scent-sensitive and I know that a lot of people are. I just say...
So we're talking about the process of what, you're, you're, you're just reiterating the process when it happened and how it bothers someone, we're trying to talk about how it should be addressed. And Melanie's pointing out that there's a way for it to be addressed currently, go to the supervisor.
Yeah, I mean, that seems, like if, cause I put oils in my diffuser, which is calming for me. Um, I haven't had anyone say anything yet, but I would feel that if someone had an issue with it, that they could, if they feel comfortable telling them directly, that they could tell Ellen. Ellen, and then at that point, Ellen needs to have a conversation with them.
But then what happens is if you have, say, we're, have a commissioners meeting and somebody from the public comes in and, you know, you're, you're not really having to...
Then you might have to ask them to leave. And you know, that option would have been great, is if we had Zoom and you could let them know that they're able to Zoom into the meeting since they're not able to be here personally.
Yeah, not when they still get that one-on-one input. It's nice to have Mary here to record the hearings, but Zoom is that one-on-one, somebody who doesn't wanna come out because they're still not vaccinated or whatever, that would be the one-on-one.
If someone was worried about having to, if they're really sensitive to smells, you know, then there's always an option, you know, for them to enter the meeting to participate.
And I, I see, even if we had a total scent-free courthouse, I can still see people from the public coming in cause they wouldn't know.
Right, yeah.
And that would still be an issue that someone would have to talk to, so I, I don't know what we'd be gaining necessarily. And I, I don't know, I guess I'll go out on a limb and say, I, I'm not, I think that's worded fine because in my opinion, um, if we have it scent-free, I don't, everything has a scent. I mean, your shampoo might have a scent, my deodorant might have a scent. I, I mean, I don't know how you can say scent-free, everything has a smell. People have a smell, you know.
And I think I put the word scent-free, I think this is fragrance-free. I, I just said scent-free. And maybe that's what our policy says, scented substances.
Yeah, I mean scent and fragrance are...
The same, but, yeah, but.
No, I just think it, it needs to be, each department needs to be aware that there is public out there that does come into your office that could be, it could affect them, you know, physically. I, I think it just should be left to the departments to...
Well, it can still be the opposite spectrum where, like if I were to be super affected by smells and someone from the public is coming into me.
Right, yeah. No, I, I, I totally agree.
Yeah, I would, I would ask them to leave.
But I mean, that's, that should be your, yeah, prerogative and, and same with us, you know. If it's affecting us or whatever, then say, let them know.
And on our hall, we have the people walking by all the time, there's a bunch of scents that go by. I would get up and shut my door because that's, you know, and someone wants me to knock on my door, but, you know, I smell stuff all the time that I don't like or that I do like. It's people walking in and out.
I don't think we're talking about smells we do or don't like. We're talking about smells that are so heavy that they affect your breathing. We're not talking about smells.
But when I, when I smelled just like yesterday and a couple, and last week, there was a strong odor of cinnamon in the hallway, so I shut my door because it, you know, it was affecting me, so I just shut my door. I didn't know where it was coming from, but, and the same with yesterday.
I just wanna make sure everyone understands, I don't think anybody's questioning, oh, it doesn't smell odor, it does. That, that isn't the issue here at all, it's the effect that some fragrances have on people. And I know, everyone knows I'm fragrance sen- sensitive, but it was really overwhelming being in a meeting where someone had to leave because one of our people had perfume on so heavy that it had a terrible effect. That's the kinda thing we're talking about and...
And that's the thing, too, a lot of people aren't aware that maybe they're overdoing it until someone tells them, and I don't know.
So I came in late and I'm sorry, I was in a court bench trial, so I don't know where far we've gone, but I wanna make sure that we're not talking about completely going fragrance-free then? I mean, what are, what are we kinda discussing? Cause the thing says fragrance-free, you know? So is that what the discussion is, is we're talking about going fragrance-free then?
No, no, we're about policy and how it's worked.
But I'm just saying, the thing said fragrance-free, so that's all I know.
No, there has been a suggestion made that, that we, that there has been a suggestion made that we take the current policy and make it more stringent.
Okay, so talk about amending the current policy then, okay? So no decisions, we're just talking about making changes?
Yeah, we have, we just kinda wanted to get the input of what everybody wanted.
Amending the policy as we have it is just basically for the employees, that has nothing to do with John Q Public. If, if they weren't worried about fragrances that were coming into this room, I mean, you could post a sign that said, you know, be aware or whatever, I, I really don't know. But John Q Public, somebody who comes up to a commissioners meeting once in a blue moon, isn't gonna know that they shouldn't be wearing a fragrance, that kinda thing. So I guess when I heard fragrance-free, I thought that was going to be everybody, employees, public, to everybody that we were going to, that's what the discussion was. And our policy, I think, is good for the employees, I don't know how to help you with John Q Public.
Right.
Yeah, because I know that, I mean, just like, Melanie has a, what do you call it, infuser, diffuser? What's that thing called?
The diffuser.
Yeah, and some women like different lotions and some women like lip balm and I would hate to see that.
Some men like cologne.
Yeah. But that's just my, that's just my...
Cologne sometimes are the worst.
Oh, yes, and colo-, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just saying that you guys are all women here and I know you probably have your own, you know, like you said, lavender, you, I mean, so yeah, I didn't mean to sound sexist, I'm just saying that I'm glad you're all here to give input because I want you to still be able to work in an environment you enjoy. But there's other two commissioners here that I don't know how they feel, so.
So if we were to make it scent-free or fragrance-free, would that mean we would all have to wear non-scented deodorant, laundry soap, fabric softener?
Cleaning products, hand sanitizer.
Shampoo, conditioner, body soap, I mean, it's, you know, there's gotta be some wiggle room here cause, you know, you take a shower and you smell like you're so...
So I guess that, again, is the discussion that it was true to make the county employees go fragrance-free? Is that what we are, I thought we were just talking about amending it some, I mean, what is the bottom line for this?
Thing it said.
And that's what I said, that's all I got was what was on the agenda and it said fragrance-free building or whatever. I'm just trying to figure out what our discussion is, are we talking about implementing fragrance-free then? Or are we talking about just making some amendments? Are we talking about completely going fragrance-free? I guess I'm not sure where we're going with this.
It was just asked that we have just a discussion about it, about fragrance-free. It's just a discussion, there was no...
Well, are the biggest issues just like perfume and cologne then?
Uh, I, I, I think so.
Cause I mean, if it's just perfume and cologne...
Well, I, I know that there, I, I know with myself, like even, um, the, the wax candles or the little things you put the little square things in or whatever.
The scentsy kinda thing.
Um, you know, I'm good, like pumpkin spice and some of those that aren't real, uh, sweets smelling, I'm fine with, but if they're like really sweet, whatever, I mean, it, it really affects me. You know, I get a severe headache and, you know, just nauseous.
And is that just, just being in the building itself or is that like coming in contact with someone's office? Or how, how close does that have to be for you to get that reaction? Is it just like if someone had it in their office and you walked by, you could potentially get that?
No, I, I think you, I, for me, it has to be like five min- you know, I mean, um...
More than just a lift down the hall?
Yeah, just walking by, I have no problem, but if it's, um, you know, if I'm in that environment for five minutes or so, it's, yeah.
Cause I know that's a concern, I think a lot of us have this, is the scents that we do have in the office, you know, being by the bathroom, you try to cover up that, so we would like still to be able to have those, uh, warmers or candles or whatever. Is there a way to help maybe figure out what scents are more affecting someone versus taking them completely away that we still have something to utilize? Cause it gets unbearable, I have to tell you, being in that hall down there, it's pretty, gets intolerable sometimes, the smell from those bathrooms. And I realize we're humans, that's gonna happen, but when you have to deal with that and have people come into that, it's a hard thing to work in. So it's almost like we have the opposite of what you guys experience when you smell those scents. It gets unbearable for us to have some of the other scents, and so there's gotta be a balance somewhere.
I think it's, if it's just so overwhelming, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't...
I know that for myself, I will ask you, oh, please don't burn that because it's having a terrible effect on me.
Right, but Dawn, like I asked Lori, is that, is that just, even if you're not in that office? What if the office is there and the door's shut?
Like Patty and Tamara, if they're burning something, I, it does float down.
Even if the doors are shut?
Well, I, I'm not gonna keep my door shut open because somebody's burning something.
Would that help you? I'm just trying to help everyone.
It depends on if it permeates, you know, I can tell you, I don't know if they always burn something. If there's something going that is having a negative effect affecting my breathing and when my tongue starts to tingle, it's a serious issue.
Right, it's a medical issue.
And I, I go down and just say, please, could you not do that because it's having a very negative effect on me?
Right, and I, and I understand that, and there are gonna be people who have that kind of a reaction.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna be everyone, so how do we find that balance and letting those who have that issue, but then also those of us who need that to be able to not, I mean, if you guys have been down there and have to deal with it eight hours a day, it can be really tough. I mean, you think, you laughed on it, but it really does.
I can't imagine being down there eight hours a day with what you're describing, and so that does make me, yeah.
Very intolerable and we're do the best, we open our windows in the office, you know, everything we can do to help with that. But there are times that you just, that's all you smell, even with the door shut. So there's gotta be some concession for those of us who have that experience. We don't want you to suffer and get medically sick and all these other things, but there's gotta be a balance somewhere.
I think if there's, you know, certain, maybe you keep trying different...
And that's what I'm saying, I don't, I don't wanna put Dawn through that, but if there's a way to figure out what scents are more bothersome and we can maybe try to stay away, but you've got to at least let us have something to cover up some of these other things. The building is sometimes down in the basement, I don't know about upstairs, it's dusty, it's musty, it's moldy, it's, not moldy, musky, it smells and it's, it gives me headaches. So on the opposite side, we've gotta find a balance.
Right.
So that everybody can still work in an enjoyable environment.
You know what, my, have you ever considered an air purifier? I wonder if that would help?
We had one discussion and it just didn't.
Sounds horrible, what you're describing.
Yeah, I have not tried an air purifier, I don't know how that would work in the office, but...
Maybe they could put one in the bathroom.
But maybe, I mean, but seriously, I mean, they, we try to keep the fans on and the doors shut and all, because it's human nature, we get that, people have to use the restroom. But there's gotta be a way for those of us who sit right there by it to not have to tolerate that.
Well, with saying that, the first week that I was working here, I brought my scentsy and I turned it on and Dawn told me that she didn't like it, I took all my scentsy stuff home cause I asked her, I said, is there any scent?
That doesn't bother you?
And she said, no, all scents, and I said, okay, so I took everything home. Since then, and I started in January, since then, I have had nothing in my office, nothing, so. And I still do the lavender, but I've never gotten any complaints, the, the one scentsy, that's the only one that I think you've had complaints about our office.
And please, it's not, this really isn't about me, I mean, cause you all know that I, I will come in just say, gosh, I'm sorry, but that's bothering me. Again, I'm saying to you, when we douse ourself in perfume, we do not know who it's going to affect. This isn't about me, this is about all of us. And maybe you're a lucky person who's not affected by somebody's perfume, but it wasn't the first time recently that someone had to leave a meeting because...
And was it an employee who had the perfume?
Yes, yes. It was a, it was a county, an employee meeting, yeah. And it, and I wouldn't even point the finger at that person because I know a lot of us overdouse with perfume. And, you know, maybe it's being in a closed room with people who wear too much perfume that affects others. I don't know, um, it just was brought forward and so I put it on the agenda. Roman said we need to have a discussion with all of the employees until that's all this is.
Just a discussion.
Did the person who was affecting the other people, did, are, were they notified or do they even have a clue?
No.
No, it didn't, it seemed appropriate to approach that person and ask them to leave the meeting because their perfume was...
If it was me, I would be happy for you to tell me that's too much.
Me, too.
If it was me, you know.
Well, then maybe not find out in public, but call them aside.
But it was a, it was a very, very, very long meeting. No, that person was not told simply because it didn't seem appropriate.
I know, but afterwards, or talked to their supervisor?
No.
Well, that's what I think we need to do. I think if there's an issue with perfume, either no perfume, no cologne, and make sure that you just have that be a starting point, and then from there, if there's scents with the oils or the scentsies, if someone's having an issue with that particular scent, go to that person's supervisor. Like that just seems...
Yeah, I just don't think...
Or if you know that person is going to be, runs a scentsy in their office, cause there aren't a lot of offices in this building, it's not that complicated, in my opinion, to know who, you, I, I know who does and who doesn't, and so I feel like it's easy enough to call and say, you know, would you mind coming up to my office real quick, or let's meet in the hall?
Oh, right, right. Melanie, I think you have very, very good ideas, I think.
I do think that you should, or somebody should tell the person, because like if it was me and I had no idea, I wouldn't know, but if somebody came to me and was like, hey, you know, that scent that you were wearing was really affecting, you know, somebody, or whatever, then I would just easily remove it from my day-to-day, you know, when I was in the building or whatever.
And I agree with you, and oftentimes when new employees start and I'm in a closed room with them, if they have overpowering perfume, I, I don't hesitate, there's always a nice and kind way to do it. For that particular meeting, I, I don't, I couldn't tell you why, it just didn't seem appropriate. And then by the time the meeting was over and I was notified, I just, I didn't.
But I think it can come back to a lot of things, a lot of the times we're told that there's complaints or this or that, but it never comes back to the department where the complaint stems. So if it's an issue that someone has with me, I would like to know. I mean, whether it's me out smoking or me having too much perfume or whatever, if I don't know about it, how am I gonna fix it? I don't think it needs to be addressed in a whole room of people, that how hard is it to come to the side and say, hey, you know, this is what's happening, these are the circumstances we have, let's try to rectify it. But if I don't know about it, how am I gonna fix it?
Right, I, I think some of the, the discussion was just kinda make the departments aware, you know, that there sometimes are some issues and...
And I think we've always known that certain people or certain people can have sensitivities to it and I think we try to be sensitive to that, but again, if it's not talked about like you're saying we're doing now, but if it's not brought to that attention of whoever might be having that scent, it's never gonna get fixed, and then the person's gonna feel like they're being attacked or talked about because someone didn't come to them specifically.
I would like to stress really, as human resources, you don't know how many... I would like to stress really, as human resources, you don't know how many times I have done that. I'm just saying again, on that particular day,
Right.
I just, I just did not do that.
And that's nice, we can't change what happens, you know, just going forward. If we can maybe try to incorporate that a little more and give the person an opportunity to change in a, in a positive way without making them embarrassed in front of everybody, it doesn't have to be talked about right now. But at least come to that person. Yes, I don't think if it's not made aware, that the change is not made.
Again, that is protocol to do it, on that particular day, Kim, maybe I was too overwhelmed with approaching perfumes. But typically, it is addressed. And I think you can all attest to that, I think, so.
And I think that's all we can ask for, is, is to have it be addressed, you know, and to have that opportunity to rectify it. But to completely take it away, I think is not fair to those of us who have to deal with it other ways. I'm not belittling anyone's health issues because I understand asthma, tingling, all that stuff, I have it as well. But there are ways to kind of, I think, balance it out, so that it's not affecting those people, but still allowing the others to have those, it makes life a lot easier to come and work when, when it's not horrible smelling, unbearable, just like it is for someone who medically is hard, it's hard for those of us who don't have it medically to smell that kinda stuff. I just think there needs to be a balance. And to let the people know, you know, and I, and I'm not going back, cause that's in the past.
Yeah, please, because I have approached, so, I, I can't state that enough, Kim. I deal with it, it's brought to me frequently and I have my own times that I have to deal with, so I please would like to. That is the only circumstance I am aware of where the person was not approached.
Yeah, and like I said, I wasn't really aware of it.
I, I can't explain why I didn't.
No, and, and I'm not even gonna ask you to go back and fix it.
Yes, thank you, yes.
The idea, like what, what are the, what's the end result?
Well, I think we can just, let's just leave the policy as is, as of right now, and then, and-
You can send like a reminder email out to everybody just saying this, if you have questions, talk to your supervisor. If you're feeling affected with something, maybe let that other person's supervisor know or let your supervisor, so they can tell that person's supervisor. And do we have to have supervisors advise? I mean, I mean, I, I don't know, is that part of the policy, is to talk to the supervisor if we're talking about the person?
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking, cause the person's gonna be advised, so one way or the other, that's all I wanna care about. So if it was me, they go to Dell, Dell, if someone's gonna come to me and talk to me about it, that's all I would be scared about.
Can you read the policy again? I think it said that you go to the person first, but if you don't feel comfortable going to that person, then you could go.
I'll just quick read it. The ability to perform one's job may be adversely affected by scented substances, perfume, lotion, oil, and scented deodorants. Staff members are encouraged to inform their supervisor or department head if a reasonable accommodation is required regarding their reaction to a scented product. The county may request reasonable documentation to support the accommodation request. The county may instruct county employees to stop coming to work with scented substances that bother their fellow employees.
Yes, I like that policy. Yeah, and just maybe the head's number.
Yeah, if a supervisor told me, you know, your perfume is obnoxious, I'm not gonna wear it.
Well, I, I don't want to have Wendy or Dixie be affected by, you know, that are in the office, but I don't want you guys affected by something I'm doing either. So, I, I'm not trying to say that we have more rights than someone who's medically, but just to try to find that balance so that we're all, as much as we can be, enjoying our work here, I mean, we spend more of our time here than we do at home most times.
Okay, well, we'll send out a reminder and then, you know, just be aware.
That's perfect, thank you.
Okay, we're a little late, eleven thirty-nine, public comment, and we have Mr. Kepke here with-
Good day.
Good day.
I started a little email conversation this week with, um, community council leaders, the board members, and I see C, um, Denley and Mr. Science.
Are you able to pick it up on your mic, Mary, or?
Yes.
Okay, maybe we, does the heater interfering?
Uh, no, it's fine, thanks for us.
Oh, okay, so, anyway, um, Jerry Doctor and I were talking a couple days ago about what a nightmare the flea market's gonna be with the traffic control and the construction.
I haven't been down that way, I don't know how the construction is laid out.
Yeah, they, they cut it off there, right there, right by Judy's house, where the, where they had to cut across there.
That crossover just before you drop into Saint Regis.
Yeah, oh, that, on the interstate construction.
Yeah, it's two lane.
Yeah.
So you're losing that.
Two-way traffic, both ways, and, or you know, there's only one lane each way. And you know how traffic stacks up, the off-ramps already to the driving lane?
Right.
Which is wrong, which shouldn't happen.
Right. So now when it stacks up, then the through traffic's gonna be stuck behind them.
It's just direct waiting to happen, because people won't slow down, they don't go to the speed limit in the construction zones anyway.
Right.
And they're always distracted and they're always in a hurry. So we gotta have a meeting of the minds.
Well, that, and that issue is clearly on, on the interstate highway, which is the state's, like you said, the-
I know.
DOT and Highway Patrol's issue. They set up the zone.
Yeah.
I mean, what do you think is a fix?
I don't know exactly, I had some, I picked some ideas around.
Isn't there the, the same type of crossover just past the Saint Regis exit? Before you get to the, the-
Little Joe.
Little Joe crossover road?
Yeah, there is, there is a-
There's a, the same type of a crossover, why can't they do it there?
Out in front of the Little River Motel, kinda out there something.
Why can't they change it to there?
Cause I think it's the bridge they're working on.
Oh, right, it's Saint Regis?
Well, they're not, they're working on the pavement, the, the eastbound concrete is what they're working on now, right? Right there across from Patterson's.
Oh, yeah, so that, moving that to the west would-
So they're, they're grinding that, so that's why the, the eastbound is-
Is the one that's shut down?
Is on the west, the westbound is on the eastbound side, yeah. And then they gotta cross back over to get to the exit. And it's just gonna be a nightmare having people backed up on off-ramps when there's only one lane of traffic available in each direction. See, and so I had an idea, a crazy idea, well, maybe if we could, if we had cooperation and signage and whatnot, traffic control, if we could get a reader board or something, flea market, take the next left for the people that are eastbound, if we could peel off the flea market traffic eastbound at Henderson, take them over Campbell's Hump, they get to the park without having to go through the four-way. That's a partial solution. Now, the westbound, we just have to have some way to accommodate more vehicles between, you know, on the off-ramp all the way down into town. And, um, all I can think of is, is more signage and an officer present and the fire department could do some traffic directing, you know, cause they help with that. But Jerry said he, he bounced it off of, uh, the highway department. And, um, they weren't much help. And in past years, when we had trouble with cars parking along Campbell's Hump Highway, which we've tried to, we've been fighting that forever. Uh, Highway Patrol came down on some of the ladies at the flea market real heavy a couple years ago about that. Well, we don't have enough volunteers to be standing every fifty feet to keep people from parking everywhere, you know?
Especially when there's not much traffic.
Yeah, there's not, you know, ultimately, we're gonna, we're gonna get more, but this year's gonna be, just be a crunch.
Especially with everybody wanting to get out.
Everybody's anxious to get out and do stuff, yeah. It's gonna be a huge flea market and there's overflow all over town that we know about already.
I didn't get my kettle corn, my cheeseburger, or-
Oh, last year?
Anything good last?
I know, we all missed it, so.
So have you had any of this conversation with anybody, like, who's the new DOT guy at the Saint Regis shop, the foreman and all that?
I don't know, we don't really have, as a volunteer group in an unincorporated town, do we really have standing to negotiate with an agency? I don't know.
Oh, well, I was talking about your suggest, because, I mean, it's good that you're concerned about the public and the safety, but really, it's DOT's concern, not, not yours necessarily.
But the Highway Patrol.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but if we're creating the attraction, you know, we've created the attraction.
Sure, that's why you feel responsible.
Right. And if we're creating gridlock, that puts people's lives in danger.
Right, no, that's what I mean, and that's why I don't think it's, that you necessarily have to have standing, it's because you have, because you feel responsible and you wanna help approaching them, because it's on their turf, on their right of way and on their exit ramps and their construction zone. I wonder if they have any ideas to address your concern.
Well, if, if the, if the guys have been around a few years, they know how crazy it is. So.
And it would be bad enough with, with both lanes.
Yeah, it's bad enough, yeah.
Yeah, I've been down there when there was just a simple parade that backed it all the way up.
Yeah, yeah.
Think of that, they don't have a parade for this one, do they?
No, 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 we will, we will for the fourth, but, no.
And that zone will be going on then, too. So this, this talking to DOT could address two big events that might be a big cluster on those ramps.
Yeah. But I want the county in the loop, too.
Well, yeah, no, I'm not saying-
We might need some of your help on the ground.
Like, you mean officers, talk to sheriff?
You know, um, we always-
I haven't been down that way, but, so going westbound, when does the first arrows and signs and the merge occur, a mile before the exit ramp some reason?
Not even that far.
Half mile.
Ah, so yeah, they're, they're still going pretty fast.
Right there at that crossover.
At the top of the hill, there's that major crossover.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where that one guy had die in that wreck?
Yes.
It's by Judy's, behind Judy's, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where she lives, but I guess it sounds like Four Mile Road or something.
Yeah, right, right in there, she's in that little sliver between.
Yeah, I think that, well, well, Denley's not here to ask, but I don't know who does run Saint Regis section.
Well, I included him in the email.
Who, who is he?
Denley.
Oh, I meant-
See, cause the session's done today, they're wrapping up.
Right.
And so hopefully he'll be home this weekend and we can bump him. He's got a lot of farming to do and stuff, but I'm sure he's anxious to just get on the tractor and tune everything else out for-
Yeah.
But we need some kind of local backing.
Mediator?
Yeah, we're gonna need something.
Well, I wish I didn't need a Saint Regis, cause we might just have to send them an email, giving them, if they haven't thought of it, like you said, this has been going on how many years, they oughta be thinking of it, but if they have not, for-
We can't wait and let it happen.
Could be a new guy that's running it.
You know, somebody's gonna get killed out there. And that's why we're trying to be proactive and get people talking. So maybe you can stew on that a little bit and, um, I've had a little bit of feedback from the community council, they don't, they don't really know what to do either.
It's not just regular Monday through Thursday traffic on the interstate, it's gonna be Memorial Day weekend, campers and-
So just that traffic would be bad enough with a single lane off of there.
Right, yeah.
It's gonna be bumper to bumper, even on the freeway.
What was the numbers for the people at that flea market on the busy day two years ago?
Like the number of people there at any one time?
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any way to calculate that, probably a couple thousand people in the car.
I would think, yeah.
I would think.
That's why I don't go to the Saint Regis flea market.
At any one time, a thousand cars going on there.
Oh, my gosh.
I know, and there's, people drive, you know, bigger trucks and SUVs.
And you're gonna have-
Motorhomes and trailers.
And part of that tie up at that four-way stop is the travel center, people trying to get in or out of there, because they're going places.
Yeah, it's kind of a bottleneck there, at least they're, they are improving the parking lot across the street.
Yeah, or the post office.
Yeah, they're, they're smearing that out.
Well, you ready?
I don't, I don't know, that's another party we need to talk to, is-
Travis will have the dog kennel ready.
What's that?
I said Travis will have the dog kennel ready. The dog walking.
Oh, is that your, oh, okay. And then, um, you know, Jerry suggested the Shovers, you know, be neighborly like they used to and let people park in there. And even if they wanna charge them a buck or two for parking on private land. I mean, we've got overflow, um, at the community center with a shuttle and senior center and probably behind the old OK, we can get some parking out there, we got good sidewalks now in the town.
What about on the right, do they have anybody talking to Jerry Jones, any of his kid?
I don't know if we got, I'll have to find out if they got any events going on that weekend.
Oh, yeah, they probably will, probably have a rope and beat.
Yeah, the overflow vendors are gonna be on that frontage road between the Mainz and Moose and the Big Red Barn on Eileen's there. And we're gonna have overflow in the community center if people wanna have a small setup indoors. Because the other, more or less covered displays are under the, the big event pavilion at the east end of the park. There's room for ten, ten by ten booths in there, you know, so people that are undercover and they got a little bit of power. So there are some small vendors that go in there, and there might be some other small vendors that could fit in the community center in limited spaces. I don't know, it's gonna be, I'll predict it's gonna be the worst year for traffic at Saint Regis as it's ever seen. I wasn't here when the freeway was built, but I did come through a few times.
Yeah.
And it was, it wasn't bad for traffic. So, yeah, we gotta get, gotta get a conversation going.
Okay, well, thanks for the update, we'll, you'll have to look up who the DOT people are, send them an email, tell them about that.
Yeah, if you could visit with the sheriff and make those kinds of contacts to get their, to get their attention.
So you said you're having a meeting, L.A.P.C. meeting or something?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that'd be-
Next Thursday here, L.A.P.C., I can't make it, cause I've got another appointment that I've already had rescheduled for myself. So I'm trying to get-
Well, is there another spokesman on your end there?
Well, yeah, we'll get George Bailey and we'll get some of our board here, yeah, for sure.
And apparently Jerry Doctor knows about it, you talked to him?
Right, he'll be here for the L.A.P.C. So I'm just gonna, just try to make a lot of contacts and get people to show up and, I don't know, does the L.A.P.C. have to have advanced notice of a topic? Like the commissioners do?
I don't know.
I think they've got, don't they have your agenda set up where they're just informational all the way through it?
More of an informational.
Is that kind of a public comment?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Well, each, each, there's a couple individuals with segments.
Yeah.
Has Highway Patrol been coming to those?
No.
Oh, that would be a good one for them to-
Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, they haven't, the sheriff's office is there, Highway Patrol hasn't come since you quit, so.
So we need to reach out to them for sure.
Yeah, because that's especially gonna be their topic, they're gonna be the ones handling all the rear enders that they have.
Yeah, we don't want them to have it, see. Anyway, I'm scared about it.
Yeah, I never even gave it a thought until you sent that out, and I went, oh, crap. So how long do we got? That's at the end of May?
It's four weeks from today.
Yeah.
Four weeks from today is when the vendors move in, and they'll start showing up Thursday night, we have to stage them off the Campbell's Hump Highway. At Logie Trail, next to the pond, over on Main Street, wherever we can tuck them, Mullen Square, you know, tuck the vendors off the, off their driving lanes.
I wonder if they consider, remember their, I don't even remember what they were doing, didn't one year, didn't they divert that the other way and go on to the, the highway going up towards their place and into town?
Before my time, maybe. There was that-
Well, I don't think it would be before your time.
Because right there by the crossover at the top of the hill, there is that, that old-
Yep, there's an old thing that goes through there.
There's an old path through there.
And I don't remember what they had going on when they did that.
That was for the construction, that's when they were-
There was a cross, yeah, and that pavement's still there, isn't it?
No.
Oh, they took the pavement out?
Oh, on the-
Yeah, the frontage road is there and it's just, just grass and a fence and a couple little trees in the way now.
Oh, I was talking about the crossover on top of the hill.
Oh, that's all paved.
Yeah, it's still paved there.
Oh, yeah, but if we got as ambitious as to-
I don't know if that would do you, if that'd gain you anything.
Well, we'll get a few people off and down Mullen Road. At least, just a few more cars that wouldn't be backed up on the freeway, maybe.
That's gonna be the, that's gonna be the killer there.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to have a real presence there, I mean, like a couple miles, that slowway exit or something, where they start picking people up.
Yeah.
Or have it signed at where.
Yeah, they, if anything, they might need to set up just for the week, those two weekends, a temporary reduced speed. Cause you want everybody to already be slowed down, because the way it's set up now, it's not like, they're going eighty, eighty-five mile an hour and then they, then they're all trying to beat each other to that arrow and then boom, then there's the exit ramp.
Howard Moon yesterday was behind a truck and I didn't think he was gonna make it. You know, and that's kind of a stupid corner that they put in there. You know, and that's kind of a stupid corner that they put in there anyway, but they got four miles of road there, you didn't have to make it like that, you know, but that seems to be traditional.
Which corner?
Where they do the crossover.
Oh.
Yeah, it's kinda tight right there and they could've tapered it out differently, but um I've heard noises out there, if I'm outside at home, I've heard bang, bang, bang noises, people running over, running over traffic candles and barrels and, you know, people running over stuff cause they're not getting attention.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's my concern.
Well, it's a good concern.
We'll be in touch.
We won't lose any sleep tonight, Lynn?
Oh, boy, I might.
All right, thanks.
Take care, thanks for showing up. Oh, I guess we're, unless Mary has any comment?
No.
Okay, comments are done from the public.